Okay, your line.
Dollar order, uh, roll call. Ken? Doug?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Uh, approval of the agenda.
Move.
Approval?
Second.
Any discussion? We do have Huxcom here.
Um.
Just the weather.
With them first?
We have both departmental.
Yes.
Any issues with that?
Move of the, the seven B. It moved, uh, to right after citizens forum. Got my chance to know the course first.
Further discussion? Joel?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Um, citizen forum. You're not, are you?
No.
Now you have to put your stuff out before the meeting. Alright, uh, moving on to seven B. Nope.
There's no, there's no air.
Sorry, that's why I came now. Seven B.
Is that us then?
Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you guys for, uh, letting us attend this evening. We invite back the general manager of Hux Communications. Uh, we've got Tommy Patrick here, our business office manager. Um, we're just here for a number of reasons. Wanted to just, uh, make sure, uh, get permission to, to do the public home in town, to use the public right-of-way. And make sure there's no permitting requirements or anything you need to be worried about. Um, I have some leave-behind, some brochures. We have our, our residential pricing and some business pricing. Uh, I have, uh, just a few of the, just the overlay of the, the design that we're designing, along with a larger map that I can leave behind as well. Along with a plan set, a whole, like, so, so we like, I'd like to give that to whoever the city administrator is or whoever would, the outside plant, uh, person to work with. And we would like the content information for that individual as well, uh, to kind of continue to work with that, uh, individuals are going through. Uh, the plan would be to do a lot of directional boring over the winter, um, or contractors who want to keep working this winter, so that can cause a, a little bit issue as far as cleanup. They'd have to come back in the spring and clean up, um, you know, as well we can, uh, or what we can't clean up over the winter, I should say. Um, and then, uh, in the spring sometime, uh, start working on the service drops up at the homes. Um, and in doing so, uh, we hope to collect, uh, interests, non-interests, but, uh, permissions to, uh, uh, bury on, on the property. Uh, Tommy sent some information out and an email out today. Uh, out of a hundred and sixty-something that had filled out the interest forms in the past, we're currently up to sixty-seven to one fiber service. So that's great. Uh, we'd like to see that number continue to go up. Uh, but, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're a local company. Uh, we're just, we're there a few miles, so any questions or concerns, you know, during the construction phase, you know, if it's smaller, uh, we don't want anything to kind of fester and, you know, the, the wrong direction there. But, uh, uh...
We already provide fiber to your school district.
Yep.
And we were here one time, way a long time ago with really, I mean, COAX, but don't hold that against us, because we've come, we've come into the fiber network technology. Um, the sixty-seven folks that, um, filled out the form online, um, we're just asking permission to, for us to have permission to bury to their homes. They are not obligated to have our services at any point. It's just, um, just gives us permission to cover. Um, our construction crew, our guys are, are, the company we contract with, they're great. Our guys are awesome. And, um, what we, we just went into Matheran and we're also going into Granger. Thanks to Levi, we're doing a whole lot of work right now. But, um, in going into Granger and Matheran, what we have learned, instead of just giving the customers permission to bury to their homes and having them fill out a form saying, especially in more rural areas, you know, we have lateral fear and we have, uh, the electric to the garage is privately buried. We actually are sending technicians out before the burial, the drop crew comes through, talking to the homeowner and saying, where do you envision us coming into the home? What do you want us to avoid in your yard? What, and to actually look at the yard and see, oh, that flower bed we're gonna have to avoid because it's been, uh, twenty years and beautiful and things like that. So, we're learning as we, as we get bigger and, um, I try to be very mindful of the homeowners and, and the construction process, um, which regardless of what we do, construction is messy. Construction takes forever. Construction's gonna make somebody mad. I know that there is a street in Granger that apparently they didn't have dirt in the neighborhood until we got there. And, uh, it was, it was, yeah, I know, in the street. We, we created dirt in the street and, and we're okay. I, I feel to a lot of those calls that get escalated, they come empty. Uh, we'll fix it as soon as we can. Again, in the construction process, sometimes we open up a hole and it's gonna have to be open for a couple of days because they're not done with it yet. But they fence it and we try to get back to stuff as timely as possible. And, and our contract crew, they really are very mindful. We have a direct line to them, so they respond when we have an issue. Awesome.
And they're a local group too, they're local. Um, so the pricing documentation there, um, that, uh, it's our, our latest, um, residential, business one. Uh, the only thing that's not correct on there are just the cable TV rates and the cable TV rates went up, uh, the first year.
Cable TV rates go up.
Yeah, and when I say cable TV, it's, it's not traditional cable TV. It's a streaming pro- product that we use. Uh, you have to use, uh, a fire stick, um, Roku or something along that line to access that video product. Uh, but, you know, we're, it's just a service we offer, we're more about the internet, correct? Or, and so then we offer speeds from a hundred megabit up to a gigabit. Um, we'll be putting in the latest electronics from our vendor to build to support greater speeds and that, and then bury in your future. Um, it's so, uh, yeah, uh, you have any questions for us?
When you say to the home, does that just mean to the front of the home? Does that mean?
To, we as Hux Communications, sorry.
Right here.
We try and follow the same path as the electric. If the electric is buried, we try and follow that same path because we're going in and out the same spot as the electric. And that also doesn't have, we have fiber on this side of the yard and electric over here and wire here and where can I put my pool? Because you've got utilities all over the place.
What about gas lines?
Well, those will locate, we, we generally follow the electric, not the gas.
Yeah, so we will work with the city. Um, who, who is the, the city superintendent? It's, uh, Tony Dennis. Okay, so we work with Tony Dennis. One thing we don't wanna do is we don't wanna throw in hundreds of locates right off of that. So, then we work with him, we kind of just, uh, just kind of just move along this, this plan G. Uh, and so, yeah, so like as Tommy said, we'll go, we'll go up to the home, then we'll install our equipment inside the home, uh, in order to turn up the service.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, then you also mentioned, uh, wifi in the park, um, and into your remote location across the park. Is that remote location, uh, nearby? It is, okay. Um, so, uh, I'd anticipate trying to get wifi, uh, to work in the park pretty well. Uh, do you, the, the burn area, is, is that multiple cameras or one camera? How, how are you planning on doing that?
Well, it's, it's in the early phases yet. This is the area that we contain. So, see, we have fiber coming to the rodeo browns, but, uh, that's the area just across the water.
So we currently have, our current fiber route follows that direction.
Okay.
That goes to the school. And so we have a vault, an existing vault on that side. Okay. So we probably just try to put some kind of service over there and try to blanket that area. But that, just these are private for you guys. Um, and then the wifi area, um, is, because I sent you those email, some of that newer services. And I mean, it's a product that we're still trying to get our head wrapped around completely, but they have to offer that. Um, I think it'll work well for the park. And so we just have to give that the exact world for the park to deal with the service. Um, and so that design may change a little bit. And that's one thing our contractor wanted to let you know is, obviously, we can change these plans set as we kind of work through their accessible pages. This, you know, that, the bigger map, you know, you won't see changes on that right-of-way, but as with all construction, you know, we get in there, maybe some changes, some changes we're gonna keep there. But, uh, yeah, I think the, the wifi is at, for, uh, like the, the Farmers, Farmers Market.
Farmers Market. Market, the park, rodeo, old sellers, all those things that take place down in parks, generally gathering areas, so, um, groups that play volleyball down there. Just a lot of activity down there and...
Yeah, I think we shouldn't have any issue trying to get that to work. Um, and then, uh, we would provide one free internet for the city. Um, and then, uh, so you can choose where exactly you want that to go. And then we can, we also provide free phone for the park. Do that, and then, uh, but through that construction, um, we can also hook fiber to, like, water tower and the things. Uh, and you can create your own version of that.
So if you guys noticed on here, the water tower, the sewer treatment plant, and the, um, lift station are all included on here. That's something I asked for. I, I talked to Tommy about that. Continuing regulations coming down the pipe, there might be more and more need for, um, electronic monitoring of those areas. Um, having fiber there would just facilitate that moving forward. If we have, at least have the drop there, the availability, the hook to it if we needed to here down the future, um, or even, you know, now, so. Right now, we're operating the sewer treatment on a hot spot.
Is that a little pricey?
Yep.
I was just saying, like, we're just in town.
Uh, it's good depending on what you're using, so.
Yeah, uh, so, yeah, our, our questions, are there any permitting departments that need to be worried about or? And then, uh, as far as timing, well, you know, permission to go, we'll have our contractor reach out and start working on that as far as when to start.
I, I see on, uh, Rock Creek Drive that you have the, uh, main line on both sides of Rock Creek Drive and that...
Must be some front easement stuff through there. Oh. Only goes so far.
So, yeah, one line goes partway and another goes over there.
And so it'd be easier just to walk across the road. So if our design and designer must, Joe, that we need to define where we set the road there.
Uh, okay.
Now, the design also is built on the, using the utility easements, which is where we, our main line lives, is the utility easement, because we're, so we don't need so much permission from the landowner on the main line part. I'm sorry, Steve.
Um. The only complaint I've heard is that, uh, there are a few people with their noses drawn and joint about the fact that, uh, thirty years ago, uh, we had, uh, COAX and then it was just abandoned. And how do I respond to them?
I believe, um, I haven't been with the company thirty years. Um, but I know that when we abandoned our whole entire COAX network, we, staff representative from Hux Communications visited each of the, of the communities, Collins, Ringo, Maxwell, and, um, expressed our intent to abandon. And I believe at the time, we offered to sell it to each of the cities.
Yep.
So unfortunately, things go bad and they break. And we have always wanted, we as Hux Communications, to drive a good product, not just a, a product.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the red lines show, are, uh, shown as a main line conduit, so that's buried.
Correct.
Okay.
Everything can be a hundred percent underground.
Even the fence.
The black lines?
Are the service drops. Now, those are just general representations of going up to the homes, so that's not exactly where, where, for the service drops.
And you say you're following electrical wherever you can? Well, I know that, uh, on my block, uh, there used to be an alley. The alley was abandoned. Uh, electrical comes in at the back of everybody's property. Uh, and it's all overhead, uh, electrical. And so that's a possibility that you would follow that to the city?
Just, we wouldn't. So we'd probably go through the backyard, uh, underground and then, uh, take the fiber drop up to the home, underground to where, close where the, the power meter is on your home. And so, uh, yeah, so that, it's not, not an exact size.
Those details would, uh, be worked out, like you said, uh, when you go to visit each of the property owners?
Yes, yep.
Right, and, and like you're saying, obviously, overhead electrical goes in a line and then it goes in a line. Well, fiber is hugely expensive. So if we're gonna go from the alley to the house, we're going to take the path of least assistance votes to the landlord's landscaping and, and other things. And also get to the electric without wasting fiber. And we're not gonna go make a square with fiber because that costs too much.
Yeah, and so, like, instances we see, kind of, uh, must be following the property lines there. You can see just like this one long black line and this, this spurs off of that. And so, yeah, we would have most of that cable just kind of jointly buried and then just take off of the homes as we get to those individual lots.
And all those decisions will be made later. What we would see, uh, this winter is, uh, the boring of the, uh, main conduit.
Yep, so all the, the red lines essentially, and the H's, which are the vaults, the, the flesh vaults on the ground. Um, there will be locations where we have coming out of the ground, uh, just fiber markers, you know, sort of, you know, fibers there with the one color information on there and whatnot. So that would typically be the one that you'd see coming out of the ground communications.
That's much, I think.
White, typical orange cap or something like that. There, there's a number of different options, but they're typically lighter than orange, yeah.
If the electrical is overhead, not buried, then you would have the cable coming underground in some way or above?
Yeah, we are completely buried. We only pop out of the ground of the house.
So a hundred percent underground, uh, which is great. So like, for instance, the Duray Show went and rolled through. Um, we didn't have any outages except for, we had one six-hour outage when a, a power pole was broken. My guys went out there to locate, couldn't get it, well, locate because of the downed power lines and trees and everything. And they drilled a hole, they drilled a, a new hole for a power pole right through a fiber. And so we had to, we had to get out there and, and splice up that fiber. And so that was a ninety-six fiber we had. We had to wait for them to finish doing their work, uh, but it was a matter of six hours to get that replaced and back up and running and operational, it was pretty unquick, I agree with that. Um, now, it is fiber to the home, and so, uh, when your home doesn't have power, your service goes down. And so there are some, you know, local UPS stuff inside your home. If you want phone, you know, we'll put that in there for sure. Uh, but you don't have to have phone, you can set up straight-up internet.
So if, uh, power goes off to the home, uh, and the home has a, uh, battery backup for the internet cable, then the internet would still work?
You would also want to have a battery backup for your router, uh, or anything.
Right, any, any of that communication stuff.
Yeah, so if you, if you have phone, we'll have a battery backup there. Um, if, if you don't necessarily have phone, we won't necessarily have a battery backup for the, what I will call the fiber modem, but it's the O N T. Um, and so it could simply be plugged into a UPS. Uh, we had, uh, during the Duray Show, uh, spent a lot of time on the phone, teaching people how to plug in the generator, um, you know, so it's, refrigerator's an internet. That's why everybody wanted operational during the, the Duray Show.
Then we were still, as long as they, yeah, had the, the generator, our internet was still working.
And, uh, you said you'll provide the city one free internet connection and one free, and a phone for the fire?
Correct.
You're still responsible for the tax portion of the phone.
The what?
The tax portion. Every phone line has a E nine-one-one and a dollar, a FCC charge of six dollars and fifty cents. The tax portion, we, we'll cut the phone. And then the internet, it's up to you. I assume your city bill has, each building has its own, um, revenue stream and, and costs, so you can choose who you want to get the free internet connection to. Some communities, the city themselves keeps it. Some communities, they, you know, like the library doesn't have quite the funding, so they give the free internet to the library. If you're all on one system too, that's not a problem. If you and the library are on the same connection, you're not a problem with that either.
We don't need it, you know, so it's unlimited data, you know, so you're just basically paying for the speed.
The, uh, cost, uh, if the, uh, city, or, uh, right now, the city has one, uh, internet connection for city hall and the fire station and, uh, uh, the front desk at the library, we're all on the same network, but then we have a separate internet connection for the public computers, uh, so that they're on a, so that they do not impact our usage. Uh, instead of doing that, uh, since the capacity's greater, doing, uh, self-netting and doing some of that would be...
Yeah, you can, uh, not...
I mean, the fire station's right there, library's next door, city hall's here, uh, one connection.
Yeah, do you have multiple routers currently?
We have, uh, one router.
We have one router and the library and us, and the fire actually has its own.
Okay.
And then you have Ethernet wire ran from probably one local spot, then you see some switch, Ethernet switches for different things. Switches, I think it's just...
Now, we have, uh, a couple with like a four-port switch. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, do you know your current speed is?
It's, uh, uh, billed where it's advertised as, uh, a hundred, uh, meg.
I think so.
It's effective is about forty.
Is that some metric, both versions?
Uh, no.
Yeah, so, yeah, there, you can probably put that all on one network, one connection. Uh, just, you just want to segregate it for security reasons. Um, that, we can assist through some of that with our, um, your, your certain settings that we can, uh, work with that.
And the, the additional network for the public, unless you have a whole lot of traffic that way, I would suggest you just do a secure guest network and not pay for a second connection.
Yeah, I mean, there's three computers over there. Uh, they are not heavily used, but they're from the public. Um, your question was, uh, what are our policies for, uh, getting access to the right-of-way? We collect a franchise, uh, fee from the, uh, electric company down. And part of the franchise fee is to make the, uh, right-of-way more accessible, uh, for, uh, utility services, if I remember correctly. Uh, would we be doing, uh, a franchise type of ordinance for, uh, Huxley to use, Huxcom to use the right-of-way like we did the, like we did for Lion and the gas company or?
So, we don't typically do a franchise, um, in other times that we've, we've gone into.
That's because other people can, uh, get their, that people can get their internet anyway, or the phone does.
Yeah, it, you know, through cellular, uh, T-Mobile or something like that. Um, there used to be franchise fees back in the cable TV days, um, but the, we don't do that anymore either. Uh, our, our TV's actually a new sold product and that company will stay in right franchise. And so that's how that, that works with, with the cable TV. Um, but then, you know, we're four hundred homes, we get a couple hundred customers or more, hopefully, uh, probably less than five percent will take and get your product. And so there's really nothing to, uh, kind of collate, collate into that. So, no, we, we typically, um, for internet-related services, we're typically using franchises, um, but we can work with all that.
What is your, what is your, if you don't mind me asking, how, when we had franchise fees with cable, it was based on, uh, revenues. And our revenues, uh, but it was, uh, like in this town, it was three percent of the base revenue of the cable product, which the last time we had cable in this town, I think the base cable product was maybe forty-five dollars. So we would then, um, pay the city of Maxwell three percent of forty-five times the number of customers we had quartered. So is...
That's the way, oh, my, for...
Okay, so they just have a three percent or whatever percent of the, their base power?
Yeah.
The wind stream is not billed with a franchise fee, correct? Yeah, I'm, I'm honestly, I guess I'm not entirely sure what the rules are for internet franchises. I'm just not aware of any charging provider for internet.
Yeah, the whole, the whole purpose of the franchise fee was, uh, uh, it was the monies to go to, uh, uh, projects in the right-of-way to ensure that the, uh, right-of-ways are maintained. So, uh, the, I'm not sure. You know, if, other communities are not charging franchise fee for, uh, uh, internet services or for Huxcom, then I don't see any reason that, uh, we would do it. And as far as, uh, any other permits were required, I mean, to my knowledge, I have the, uh, permitting requirement other than, uh, making sure you work closely with, uh, Tony, who's the, uh, public work supervisor, to make sure that, uh, we have all the information so that we don't, uh, accidentally step on anything.
Yep, yeah, and so we'll work through it, so we won't call, auto-locate them at once, go to work with Tony and just work in an organized path as we work through all the main line there. Yeah, and that is you guys as the key. Um, and we would just want to have this kind of information.
I can provide that to you, Nina. Perfect, I'll go to this phone and this email.
Perfect.
I see that, uh, you have some lines, uh, going beyond the sin limits, uh, and that was another question I had received. There's, uh, some residents on, uh, down toward, uh, the, uh, Peoria Cemetery. Lot of little houses development down that direction, and I see you have a line headed down that way.
Yeah, so, um, there's been a number of, uh, grant opportunities through the state in, uh, like CARES Act and federal government stuff, uh, that has been released over the last few years. Um, and Hux Communications was awarded, uh, four separate grants, and it was the, uh, Power World Iowa Broadband Grant. Um, so it was the number seven, uh, the seventh grant at that time. And so, uh, we're obligated to bury, or fix some fiber up in these locations in rural areas. And so, uh, we have approximately four hundred and twenty-ish, four hundred and thirty-ish, I believe, uh, rural story county residents that we are also really building, building to, uh, between now and, uh, twenty twenty-six.
Well, we got the, uh, notice from Huxcom, uh, last week. Uh, I went ahead and, uh... Well, we got the, uh, notice from Hoxcom, uh, last week, uh, I want to hit, uh, let people in the around know that, uh, it may include them, but what they need to do is, uh, go to your, uh, website and at least express an interest, and, uh, if they don't express an interest, then there'll be no incentive to go out that way. No guarantees, but, uh, at least go online and say that you might be interested.
Yeah, and they might be part of that grant area. And then, and the way that was built was, it was built by census blocks. Well, networks aren't built by census blocks, right? So, if we're going down a road and the left side of, the south side of the road was underserved and therefore eligible for grant money, uh, and we're building to those, and there happens to be a house on the north side of the road, we're going to build them anyway, even if they weren't considered to be underserved. And so we'll have, we'll have a lot of that here in Story County. The original plan was to get to, uh, Story County in 2025, um, and, and build that rural area, and, which included Maxwell. We've just decided to accelerate that timeframe a little bit and get Maxwell on, um, here this year.
And good job, you on telling them to go to the website.
Yes.
We, we have, on the back end, it's, it's really fun to see, we have an interactive map, and so the map of Maxwell, we have, there's little, uh, escalation points on everybody who's turned in an interest, oh, you have...
You see, if you have it.
Yeah, and, and so if they have, if we have an interest on them, we have their email. So then today, I sent out emails to everybody who had interest in Maxwell, so they now know that they can sign up to have, give us permission to bury to their home. So, good job, you.
Well, I know that, uh, the people down that direction have had, uh, problems with, uh, even getting, uh, slow access. But, so this is, this is positive not only for Maxwell, but for the, uh, general Maxwell area.
Surrounding areas as well.
Yep. So, what do we need to do tonight? This is just informational?
I, if you need to make an action, I'm great. If, if not, uh, we just, we will, we will just move forward. Reach out after you send this information for, uh, Mr., what was his name? Ness?
Tony Ness.
Tony Ness.
Yep, you have it in your inbox right now.
Perfect. Um, yeah, we'll just get to work and we'll stay in touch and, uh, again, local company, you know, just give us a call. If something's, uh, you need to talk about something, then we'll just work through it. Uh, the, the whole Wi-Fi part, but it's something that we'll work closely with you guys, uh, as we kind of understand the Wi-Fi product, the new Wi-Fi product from that company as well. And there's some other services they're coming out with. For instance, like how many businesses do you have down?
Uh, well, somewhere on Main Street, you know, this kind of lineup, um, starting with the edge of town is the, of course, there's Co-op down there, um, there's Central Iowa Shore behind which is the hardware shop, um, then you have the barber shop, you have Legion, auxiliary, you have the, uh, Settler and Clinic, flower shop, um, living down, you've got the grocery store, community center, bank, mom's restaurant.
We have essentially no businesses that would use a, a business level of access. We have, we have one computer, if any, or maybe two, so I think one of your things, uh, three hundred dollars for a business.
For a gig of it.
Yeah.
That's the...
Maybe, maybe five years ago, when we had a, um, server company that was networking, um, up here on Main Street, but that's not there anymore, so, uh, I think that was fireside communications.
Yeah, they had their own fiber connection anyway.
Yep.
We don't sell a gig service very often. We also have a gig service available to residential. People ask for it. I'd say I really, I really don't need, oh, they need to give service, but some people just want to have the, the number.
Yeah, and so then we have the, our extra Wi-Fi as well, um, that we would install our own router. We can manage the router from the, from the office. It comes with, uh, essentially some, uh, parental controls and then virus protection, like hardware virus protection, which is a little different, because, you know, today with, you get these connected homes, smart homes, you throw in all these weird devices inside the home, helps protect all that stuff. We don't have virus protection on them, you know, so it protects all that stuff as well. And so that'll be another service that we can add on. Um, and the reason why is I asked throughout the business is they have a new business, uh, platform that we're trying to get our heads wrapped around, what I will offer as well, that would create, um, separate networks for things like credit card processing, public Wi-Fi and stuff like that. And so, um, that was kind of what my, this really question you guys had to see, it's an opportunity to have that here. But, um, we're not a hundred percent sold on that one just yet, so.
Medical Center might be the only one, the doctor's office in the town.
Heard about the doctor.
Good, good point.
But the bank also has an ATM that's, I'm sure, you can connect it as well, so they might have higher security.
They're using satellite, right, right now?
Yeah, I believe so, something that's not double.
We are more than willing to come back. Now, in other communities, we've had like an ice cream social, we mattered, we had a little ice cream social. Not a big deal. We had cups of ice cream and brochures and answer questions of the community. So, we can do, set up something like that as we get closer to install. The other side of it is some, telling, judging from the interest, I mean, people just want good internet, so there's not a lot to sell, but we would be happy to talk to the community if you would like us to.
And being a cooperative, um, unlike when the cable TV was in town, has a separate kind of company through Hoxification, uh, and there'll be position, there'll be opportunities for people running for the board and do different things too, so, you know, we become part of the community.
So, I have a community focus group, uh, February seventeenth, uh, community center, um, starting at nine AM, where you'll have a captive audience of at least sixty residents in town, um, who are there getting forced to do, asking their opinions on traffic and transportation needs, so that's an opportunity.
We would be happy, would you like us to come and give like a little twenty-minute presentation?
I don't know if the presentation will be an opportunity as much as just being able to be there and answer questions and having people coming in.
What day is it, sir?
It's, uh, the seventeenth, sir.
And what time?
About nine AM.
Well, it's not all in settlers too, has something set up where you get...
I think, uh, the fiber will probably mostly be in my old settlers.
Exactly. I have been...
So, considering we knew someone better to get out to the community and...
Right, and there are some, I mean, again, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to having to events, but sometimes when the event is more of a social, people don't want to talk to you about the internet at that point. Um, again, Madrid, uh, Labor Day is their big celebration.
So, we had a booth, nobody cared about us.
Saturday too. Legion Dinner is Saturday, um, right up here at the Legion Center. You guys want to stop, ready to grab a steak and...
Is it Saturday?
Yep, it's coming Saturday.
Uh, it's the first Saturday of every month, so...
So, there'll also be one on the third of February.
But there again, like you said, there are a lot of people are there for something else. Uh, but if you wanted to have a play, have brochures handed out, we could certainly, uh, uh, have brochures on the, uh, table, uh, or at the counter, so that when people come in, they can, uh, uh, pick up a brochure, maybe that will, uh, see a little interest.
Right. That, that's the side of it, and I don't want to steal this, hold it on people's fun time that, that when they think I'm trying to sell them something, but if they want information, we're happy to give. But, um, I might put together a, we do have a Who We Are brochure that...
A few here.
That we can update and also maybe put in the, the, what our plans are.
Yeah.
We have something like that available so that they can just pick it up and call us if they have questions.
We can certainly put that out of the, uh, order counter, so I will, I will do that if anything you provide.
Great.
A little conversation and a dinner.
Come to the dinner.
I, I've heard Legion dinners are very good, yes.
Is Merlin Ali still, uh, on the board?
He's not.
Excuse that?
Nope.
Okay.
Very nice gentleman. It's always, it's always a pleasure to see him.
Yeah, I've worked with him for years. Uh, so, my, hopefully, the last question is, uh, uh, we had, uh, um, Windstream or whatever they prefer to themselves as?
That's right.
Uh, come in a couple of months ago saying that they were going to, uh, uh, run fiber to the underserved area, which, uh, was essentially, uh, the east side of town, uh, and, uh, just notifying us that they had plans, uh, and so, uh, their plans, are you aware of their plans or?
So, that was, uh, what I'll call no fund number eight, the last round of funding that was, that was out there. Uh, that was done differently, um, from the other previous seven rounds of how the money was allocated to the providers that were out there. It was done through what's called broadband intervention zones, and so then, uh, that was kind of done through, that was, that was kind of more from the government's, uh, you know, story council supervisors and city councils and kind of coming together to kind of do that thing, right? If that money was supposed to go toward those broadband intervention zones first, there's any money that then left over, other projects, like the one that Windstream was trying to, to get money for, would have fallen into that. That money that was dispersed, um, some of it went to those broadband intervention zones and some went to other projects like what Windstream was, but Windstream just was not awarded, um, any money through that, um, and so...
So, we won't have, uh, internet people, uh, taking potshots at each other?
Doesn't mean there's, they still won't do anything.
And it's okay, we're not afraid of them. We, we still do better customer service and better fiber and there's nothing wrong with competition. The only time that I have an issue is if we're burying at the same time as somebody else, and we really are meter and not as messy, even though we created dirt as the other guy, but you have two constructions going on in town, you can't help but blame us for some of it.
I think they said all of theirs was going to be aerial, just like their phone is, that's a...
So, I guess the dirt will be our fault.
Well, one of the things that we discussed in our, um, planning in for emergency management issues was the opportunity to have that communication that's buried in town. Um, and we brought that up to them and they said, well, it's whatever's cheapest, so...
It's substantially cheaper to go aerial, it really is.
That's what they were, they were looking to do, and which doesn't provide us with the safety and security of knowing that we have a dedicated connection to the outside world when operations and other issues happen, so, yeah. That was one of our focus points to ensure that we're able to keep managing operations when things happen.
Yeah, we're slowly underground.
Well, uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that, uh, we encourage, uh, Hoxcom to extend, uh, fiber that they would make our right-of-way available to them, providing they work with our public works supervisor, uh, in keeping, uh, him aware of, uh, construction. Is there anything else you need to add to that?
I think as long as we have the communication, if an issue arises with needing of access, that we just reach out to each other and work through that.
Absolutely, I'll second that.
Further discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
All right, there's our motion. We're here to support you, you're here to support us, so...
Yes, that's how it works.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, any other information you guys need to sell or, but, um, there's some going.
All right.
I think I've been working on getting Hoxcom here for ten years.
Good job, you, we're finally here. Actually, uh, Maxwell's been one of my little, every time operations says out a map, I'm like, we already have fiber in Maxwell, but it takes more than that one, I have to get here.
Yeah, I started, uh, I used to be a technician for Hoxification way back in the day, came back as a general manager at 40 years in 2019, and he's mentioned Maxwell quite a bit since then, so...
Good for her.
She's got a chance to get a Maxwell.
I know that I've only got about probably forty or so people to sign up, but I'll take the forty because we, we do, we know that we need good service.
Well, I was super ten, oh-four to oh-nine, we had fantastic service. That's cool, Eric.
Good, I'm glad. Well, we'll continue that throughout the panel now.
Windstream's past performance has upset a lot of people in this town.
So, if you go with, uh, your phone service, can you keep your phone number?
Yes.
I was thinking that they were now portable.
Yes, yes. Now, it, it takes a little, a little longer because there's a process we have to go through to get your phone number, but yeah, no, that's not a problem.
Yep.
All right.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in, I appreciate it. Nice meeting you in person.
Yep.
Have a good night.
Safe driving.
Yeah.
We all need departmental reports. We have a sheriff's report.
Yeah, it wasn't in front of you?
Oh, yeah, that's why I couldn't see it. Right above it. All right, so, city of Maxwell for December.
How many hours?
Forty point three seven in-town hours, monthly town hours, which is down about three hours from November. Uh, patrol time in town, December was twenty-five point nine seven, which is about two hours more. And, uh, town calls for service was fourteen point four, which is down five hours. Well, let that go around. If you guys have any questions, we'll circle back. Sheriff's report for December, they had one call with eleven people, uh, one in Indian Creek. No accidents or injuries, no maintenance, no special events, and nothing the city needs to do. Moving on to EMS, uh, for December, they had five page outs, four pages from Maxwell they spawned, one to four EMS per call, one firefighter's assist, three in the city of Maxwell, two in Indian Township, none in Washington Township. Uh, there's six attendants for the training. The monthly check was completed, the CQR was completed by Story County Medical. No vehicle maintenance needed. Uh, currently in the process of writing a new ordinance for combining units. And information's been given to Deb with regards to selling an old eight-sixty-three. What do you call Anna?
Yeah. Let's go get her.
So, library board report. We had five members, attendants, total of a hundred and thirty-six books, eighty movies, two hundred and sixty-six in attendance. Was a total of three children, a hundred and twenty-eight adults, four attended the movie, eighteen attended the activity attendance. Excuse me, attended the activity, and then forty-six adults and twenty-nine kids and one Santa attended the holiday party, which was shared with the fire station. Bridges has a total of two hundred, ninety-one hold. Computer use was fifteen adults and thirteen children. Current events, the strat plans in fishing stages, accreditation checklist has began, one-year director evaluation, ninety-year, ninety-day review for assistant. Friends of the library annual chili soup cook-off, January twentieth, I date the Mac. Uh, the holiday party went well after being paired with the fire station. And upcoming events, so the strat plan is due. Accreditation is due, they're applying for grants for, including E-rate for lower internet bill, looking for local art for walls. And then we have Anna Baldwin, the director.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself because obviously, uh, you know me and you know me and you know me, but, uh, they don't, you do not, which are also my representatives for the library, correct?
Right.
So, Joel, uh, Joel?
Yes.
And Sue, I've known you for a while, we've met before a few times. We have.
I'm older than you are.
You are, but I've worked at some places where I think you've frequented before, I used to work at a clinic.
Oh.
And I think I met you there a few times, I think I actually delivered you medicine once. I think so. So I just wanted to introduce myself so you knew who I was, uh, and who you guys were. And I wanted to invite you over at some point to kind of meet our board. Just so we can keep that communication open between the library board and the city council. We opened it up pretty well with the last council members, we hadn't had a lot of that before that, so. My board would love to continue to work hand-in-hand with the, the council representatives. So, also if you had any questions.
You've got my number.
The council tries to keep its hands off of the, uh, operation of the library that is, by statute, the library board's responsibility. But we do end up, uh, interfacing, uh, and, uh, the billing and making sure that when a bill, uh, needs to be paid, it gets over here and gets paid on, uh, in a reasonable amount of time. We can't guarantee that it's paid immediately, but, uh.
Correct. We, we've, uh.
I know you've, we, the two of you have worked together on that in the past, so you're well aware of, uh, those problems. Uh, we are in budget season and you've got the, uh, worksheet, uh,
Yes, sir.
For the library worksheet.
Yes, sir.
And I think, when, when it, is the council going to be going over the library?
Sixteenth.
Is it next week?
Yes, she told me to.
Sixteenth is what's on the schedule.
Okay, so.
My board is aware, they are going to try to make sure that we get that, it should be easy to do, last year we sat down for a very long time and, rectified a lot of things and went through it, they, they went through it pretty good and, uh, and made up pretty good things, so this year shouldn't be too hard. We're right in the middle of finishing strat plan, which is due in February, and accreditation, which is due in February. But they kind of threw a lot on us this year. And then this was moved up, so that's okay, my board is prepared, so.
Great.
They plan to do that on Thursday, we are actually meeting a week earlier. So hopefully we can have it done, otherwise we wouldn't have met until the sixteenth. So if we do run into any problems, I will reach out right away and let you guys know.
Very good.
But we should be good.
So one of the things you missed, uh, was the group that we just had in here, which was HOXCOM Communications. They're currently planning to, this is their plan, to bring fiber to town. There is, with that was a conversation about the internet between here and there, and offering a free, one free internet service to the city, so. Your internet issue might take care of itself, because I see you're starting seeking out the E-grant.
Yes.
But that would be at, at earliest in the fall.
Okay, well, yeah, and the, the E-rate wouldn't be either, it's a long process as well, so.
So something that might be coming down the pipe for you.
Okay, I will, I mean, certainly continue to look into it if they, either way.
Since we get one free connection from the city, we thought we would have, and the, uh, free connection would have a guest, uh, account. So, the, uh, public access, uh, could access the guest account and, uh, everybody else, uh, would be on a separate subnet.
That was going to my next question, since we do offer free public wifi.
Yep.
To access outside of the building, even when we're not open.
Yep. That would be.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Included in the free connection. We may have to extend our own wire over to the fire station, but, uh, whatever cost that would be for that would be paid off pretty quickly. And the reduction of costs, uh, to, uh, Windstream, so.
Do you find it necessary then for me to continue to apply for E-rate in the meantime?
I think if, if we can get that benefit sooner than later, it'll start saving you money now.
Okay.
I don't know how long that process is, but if, I hate to say that sure that it's going to be here tomorrow from HOXCOM, but it still has to go through underneath every road in town.
Right.
So they, they have a big project ahead of them. A lot of underboarding to get that through.
They plan on, uh, starting to do connection, individual connections, uh, this summer.
Okay.
And so, you know, maybe the city will have, uh, its connection this summer, or it may be in twenty, twenty-five.
Okay.
So, it kind of depends on what your, uh, grant horizon is and how much effort it takes to, uh, work on it.
It's kind of a long process, actually, it's a three-part process. You go through the first application and then you have to get bids from other local places, which now that would include this, and then, the third part is that they vote, so that wouldn't be until, I think, the summer that they vote on if you get the, uh, the grant as well, so.
So some of their information is right up there?
Perfect.
Do you want to share that with any community members that come in? They need to go in and sign up on their website so that they can have fiber to their homes, if that's a bit so choose.
Perfect, I will definitely, I'll get on the business line. Oh, it's good to be there, okay, I will. I think the only stipulation was that we, we have to, we have to agree that we will allow the federal part of it to, uh, block out pornography sites, which obviously is not a question. So, we, we started the process, we just need to do the application, and so I'll just continue with that until we know a little bit better.
That was a safe bet.
Perfect.
So how does, how does the federal government block out pornography sites?
I, I'm not exactly for sure, they did not tell me that, but because it goes through this E-rate, they're able to, they're able to go into.
Additional software.
They stop this firewall essentially through whatever internet provider provides a service, the school actually has that. So we already know that we could.
So. It would be.
Yeah.
Would you, would you have a problem, Deb, of having your pornography blocked?
It's gonna be hard, yes, but I think I can go without it.
Okay.
The only question that they had had about that was the, the rights to our patrons, because technically, they have the right to go over there and look at whatever they want on our public computers, and I cannot stop them. It's a sad, crazy world we live in, but I can't stop them, however a patron could say that they were uncomfortable and they could stop that, unless it was an illegal, you know, pedophile or, or child pornography things, but this would stop that altogether, although in the eight, or seven, seven years I've been here, that's never happened, so. Luckily.
Yeah.
I'll be in tomorrow.
It's a snow day, I know what you're going to, it's a snow day now, alright, uh. I'll make sure that we keep that closed.
Alright, we'll get back on track.
Alright, well, thank you, and then I will let Deb know when we have our next meeting, it's a couple of months from now, it's fine, he just want to know who they, our meeting with, that's all.
Very good.
Thank you, appreciate you coming over.
Yes.
Alright, we'll move on to the generates public works. Nothing new, Tony says bring on the snow.
So this is his fault today?
Yep.
Yep, I know.
Parks is nothing new, water, they pumped one point eight million gallons, they sold one point one, so we had a substantial increase over last month, I believe. Last month we were five hundred thousand, now we're closer to seven hundred thousand gallons. And then the leaking service line has been fixed on Broad Street.
You believe that that happened? Huh?
I think it was Monday.
Okay, so, then.
That would have been Thursday or Friday last week.
That was last week.
Yeah, Thursday or Friday last week.
So that, uh, uh, seven hundred thousand, the leaky water line is part of that seven hundred thousand. And we won't see the benefit until the next month first.
Right.
Okay.
Um, and sewer, we pumped two point seven million gallons, which another million gallons more than what we actually pumped, so.
Tony was saying he thought there was a good share of that going down the sewer lines, because as much was leaking, wasn't coming to the surface.
That's very possible.
So, seven hundred thou, I mean, we sold one point one, we pumped two point seven. There's maybe seven hundred thousand leakage, so that's still about a million gallons more pumped than water we sold. But, uh, you know, that's just ground, you wouldn't think there'd be that much infiltration, but, uh.
We're still low on the area, so. Water table.
Yep.
Was fifteen feet for the one pump. But, but. Uh, on the city clerk, still sorting and scanning, sending out letters for the affidavits, received ten of twenty-one. Yeah, it's fifty percent, it's not bad.
We got another one today.
DNR say how many we had to have? Hundred percent return?
All one.
Of course. How long has it been since those were sent out?
Right before Christmas.
I think we're on our second, yeah.
Second week, third week?
Second week, first.
Alright.
Right after Christmas, or well, the twentieth. Right before Christmas.
Yeah, right before Christmas.
Can I ask if after a month is passed that we reset them again?
Sure.
Please. We need to keep that process moving.
Of the ones that we've sent, how many of them are, uh, residents here in Maxwell, as opposed to, uh, property owners who don't live here?
Rental property, I always think of war that would have been a rental property area.
There's only, there's two that, because Ken Couch is dead, so his wife, his daughter's got the estate and she signed it, and Rick Suesker signed it, which he's the other landlord, so both out-of-towners have signed it.
And so of the ones remaining, they're all, uh, Maxwell residents that maybe some snowbirds that may not be around, but, uh, otherwise, they probably should be accessible.
Yeah.
Okay. That's your count at twenty-one and my count at nineteen. And so if it comes down to, we can compare, uh, which ones are actually in and which ones aren't. I end up knocking on doors.
On to treasures report.
Actually, some of the ones that I thought we'd have trouble with have already signed.
The tree bill came in, the removal of trees, we were seventeen hundred fifty over the budget that we allocated for that this year. That was the only thing I really saw on the treasures report.
And was, uh, there was a question about a tree that may or may not have been, uh, on the, uh, list, it was up by the old brethren church on the north side, uh, where, Tony thought it was on the list and, uh, the, the people say, no, it wasn't. Do we have all the trees out of the right-of-way now? Or are there still some that we have a second round to do?
We have a second round, this was less than half.
Okay.
Do we need to have the tree guy go through and re?
I think we just need to.
Evaluate?
We need to cover this with our DIS piece coming up shortly. And then, uh, but then, I think we just need to look at the original maps, mark off which ones are done, because we have a map. Ken has a map of all the ones that were on that original list, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five or so.
And a lot of those were in the park.
Yep, there's parks and.
We decided to have, have those at a lower priority.
But.
Did we, uh, grind out the stumps also, or?
Yes.
Maybe of them, if not all, are they all?
They're, they're all grown.
Correct.
Great.
Uh, budget report. Still have the stormwater issue, which is the wood lawn. And overage in the road, bridges and sidewalks. As well as community budget, community beautification needs to be moved. And the city hall needs to be moved. Those were the only issues I saw, unfortunately we have to reevaluate, we have to republish for the budget hearing due to an error in the original budget posting. Any other concerns or discussion? Then on to engineers report. Uh, Wes is not able to attend tonight due to weather conditions. He sent me, it should be in practice now. Uh, status progress update, Baldwin Street reconstruction. Revising plans to remove the drainage ditch from the project per the CBDG grant requirements. Acquisition of the required easement is in process, Summerian Corey is finalizing the CBDG, uh, funding agreements. They are expected to submit final plans to DOT by two twenty twenty-four for five twenty-one twenty-four bid letting. Key outstanding items to discuss are a plan for completing stormwater drainage ditch outlet to the creek. Potential tree removal requirements prior to bid letting and final funding determination with city financial professional. Uh, water treatment plant. NPDES wastewater discharge permit, final plans is anticipated to be required by twenty-seven. Field survey is complete, preliminary design is in progress. Wood lawn stormwater study, preliminary design is complete. Preliminary construction drawings will be submitted to the city for review, comment upon resolution of minor outstanding design components. Rock Creek Ridge Estates Platte Two, no requests for progress from the developer to our knowledge. Uh, part of Iowa Trail story coming conservation, working through preliminary design and trail improvements per work session discuss, decisions. Twenty twenty-four engineering service, per request, we will be developing a written scope of services for general city engineering services. Excuse me, will submit for discussion at a future council meeting. If particular windward services or requirements are requested, please feel free to provide info on those that we can address included in the agreements.
Question on Baldwin Street, if they're gonna let bid May, when do they anticipate the work to be, know that information?
Like you said, go ahead, Steve.
The bid letting is being made, and so construction, uh, wouldn't start, uh, for at least thirty days. Yeah, which means summer is still the goal, but.
Yep.
Okay.
As far as I know, that was their intention, was to get moving on it this summer.
Yeah, meaning that by school time and fall time, plant harvest.
I, I have a question here on the wastewater discharge. Does that have to go through Snyder and Associates for engineering, or can Tony and Scott, would they be able to just, I mean, they, they've got the experience to design it themselves, does it have to be through an engineering?
The issue is the provider's a pump station. So, we have to double pump it from the. So we have to double pump it from the water treatment plant out to the, well, to the connection up here on Broad Street as well as. So it's not really a construction project that's in our scope abilities.
Okay.
I don't, I don't believe anybody ever else having other ideas or.
Scott brought it up to me and said that that's part of what he did at his previous job and that he could save the city money by doing it um, without going through an engineering. Uh, we just have to make sure that DNR is good with that process. Just have to save money.
Could it be on him that approved by Snyder?
Well, Snyder's already done the work, uh, and, uh, but since Scott says that he has some expertise in that area, uh, then any, uh, thing that comes up in the future, we should certainly ask him first if it's something that he feels was in his wheelhouse. I mean, this is already, uh.
This is, the project's already built.
Yeah, field survey is complete, the, uh, preliminary design, uh, they say preliminary design is in progress. But they've done a lot of preliminary design already. So.
Yes, this was a year and a half of research to get to this point, so.
On this part of Iowa Trail, that's our last meeting. We discussed the differences between what had been proposed initially to what DNR. What does that mean for this, it's still working through the prelim- preliminary, is that the one that they wanted to do?
I think you're talking, oh, uh, okay, preliminary design and the trail improvements. Uh, so that, it's still a plan that they presented to us, we approve. That's, that's the preliminary plan. Uh, they may change.
I would say can it be changed?
But, yeah, that's up to them whether or not it changes, we approve their preliminary plan, they have to bring it to us again if they ask for additional changes.
I think the only changes that are gonna happen at this point is, uh, in discussion with Plunkett's, uh, whether or not, uh, they were, uh, allow easement to make the corner from the trail a little bit easier around their property. Uh, whether, uh, they could put the trail, uh, up a little bit higher on the toe of the slope adjacent to their property. It'll just be some discussions with, uh, them as a property, everything else is city property. And, uh, there's gonna, we have a community visioning. Uh, and one of the things that we suggested, community visioning, look at is, uh, uh, the connection, uh, from the city sidewalks down to Dollar General. And, uh, how, now, this would be also a clue how a bike trail, uh, would work on that, which you wouldn't have to have the bikes on sidewalks, you could have just a dedicated, uh, lane adjacent to the road where, uh, with a, uh, where the bikes would ride like they do on many other roads. Uh, to get, uh, bikes uptown, but then still have a walking path, uh, down to Dollar General. That's gonna be something that the visioning committee would look at as to how they feel that's project.
Yep. Anything else on that? I don't have a Parks and Open Spaces board report.
Yeah, Jody was working on it when I left for the meeting. Said, well, submit it and, uh, it could be provided for council at a future meeting.
Let me see if she has it.
Oh, probably not. I'm actually working feverishly at it, uh, at five minutes till, and I said, don't worry about it, just send it in and, uh, we'll cover it in the future meeting.
Alright, so, public hearing, that is a scratch, correct?
Yes.
Okay, scratch public hearing due to the error.
And the error was seen by Joel and it's on line sixteen of the, uh, amendment. The thirty-two thousand dollars should be shown on line seventeen. We should check, go ahead and correct the error.
No, it's out.
Okay.
We checked.
Even though the dollar amount is the same.
That's what I was.
Because, because it's in different, uh, you can't, can't make it correct, you just have to republish and, uh, hold the hearing at a different time.
So we wanna include the the bridges, the overage for the tree removal into the next budget?
Uh, you mean in the next amendment?
Yeah.
Absolutely. We should try to catch as much as we know, are we gonna be doing more trees, yeah, out of this current budget year?
Possible.
Well.
It's around the corner, but.
If we are. Well, yeah, we have the funds, cause we're using, uh, community investment, the local op- local option sales tax. So the cash is there.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, we have forty trees that we've removed. If we're gonna do another forty trees, estimate the same amount of money.
We could do around the same, I mean, we're still within that same bid period. And we're only, we're six months from when we did the, uh, bid proposal till the time the trees are completed and out. So if we looked at posting the bid again and having the opportunity to continue on the, at the same discounted rate that we had before, cause that was really what saved us, I mean, that, that was nearly within our budget to take out more trees than we expected to be able to do.
Trouble is, we don't have facilities to take the residue right now.
Okay, we just pile it up.
Yeah, be filed.
Well, fire is not possible, but you know, chip shredding is, we could, we could look at potentially getting another chip shredder in here and shredding up excess material. Cause we did that during COVID, or during the duration.
So at least pile them out there and be done with it?
It's an option, it's double handling, but.
Is it our responsibility or DNR's since they run it too? And pretty much have their.
They just tell us what we can do.
Yeah, our responsibility.
Our responsibility. I did look at this about a tree recycling avenues as far as if we had somebody come in and pile up piles of trees. Uh, there are companies out there that will come in with, uh, basically wood processors and they will turn it into a usable lumber. And paying for that usable lumber.
Portable sawmills.
Yep, yep. So there are other, other alternatives versus just burning everything and letting it go up in smoke, dealing with DNR and or turning it to mulch, which, I mean, we can all use mulch, but we don't, the last pile of mulch that we had down there rotted away, so.
Yeah.
Which, it does help, I mean, that helps when you at least turn it back to, uh, dirt type of material and use that elsewhere as well, but.
Well, I would say let's, uh, uh, put an equal amount of money in there, uh, that we've spent so far. And I would, uh, um, local option sales tax is a cash source and, uh, if that means we get another forty trees, great, if it means we only get thirty-five.
Right.
Of course, we, we still have to get rid of the trees, some of them are a public safety issue in the parks.
That was a bonus is what I really saw was the main brightaway trees that were the biggest danger. But those, those are gone. Uh, the two down here on the corner of Main Street, those are gone. There was one up here on the corner of Broad that was probably a hundred fifty years old, that was only had about two inches of bark around it that was holding it together, that was a big tree. So some of those trees that got taken down were, um, dangerous, so. Alright, um, on to business. And business C, discussion action on GIS mapping and cost. I know we had, uh, we discussed some of this in a prior meeting, um, where we had jumped on the idea of utilizing one source. And the public works had said, hey, the other communities surrounding us are using this other source. So they, they asked if they could get the, let's say, sure, let's compare apples to apples. So then when they got them, they weren't quite apples to apples. But we're able to kind of get down to the point of what's apples to apples. One is a Silver Smith, which is the company that was not displayed. This is basically a, um, this is what Cambridge uses and Collins uses, Silver Smith. There is an upfront cost of sixty-four hundred and four dollars and an annual reoccurring fee for software data package management at eighteen thirty-four. Which is enough. Uh, the other setup was a total of sixty-nine eighty-six out the door with an annual fee of seven fifty plus three ninety. So eleven forty.
And that's the Siler?
So Siler is the company that Story County uses, and that was what was displayed here. And Silver Smith is the company that, uh, is used by Collins and Cambridge. And in talking to Tony, he got to you play with both systems. He didn't really have anything positive, he didn't say, are you one of them? Uh, he said he liked the way that Silver Smith played out the costing, cause he had to beg and plead to get a costing similar. So we compare apples to apples with Siler, uh, but ultimately we got what we were looking for. He, he played with both systems and didn't really have a complaint on either one.
I was talking to Tony and Scott the other day about this, um, the one thing that they brought up was, or a couple of things that they brought up. Um, the, the tech for Silver Smith lives in Norwalk and would be readily available if we needed him. Uh, if something went wrong with the system. Um, the other company, their technician is out of, uh, Omaha. So that was a concern. Um, the other concern that they had brought up to me was that, uh, with Silver Smith being used by Cambridge and Collins on each side of us, that if one piece of ours broke down, they could essentially go to one of those other communities and borrow something until we could get ours taken care of. So it'd be easy to.
Which would fall in line with what we could do with Siler, Story County has that available. We could go to the bay then grab what they're using up there too, if, if that was an issue. I, I wish they were here, I was kinda expecting them to be, one of them to be here, since this is program that they're gonna be operating. I get the understanding of, the thing that Tony and, and Scott both liked about Silver Smith is that they knew that they, they had a question, they could just call one of the other two cities. Um, they'd feel more comfortable talking to one of those guys versus calling somebody at Story County to say, hey, help me want to do this, but.
But did we, don't we have a local resident that's, uh?
We do.
Say he helped set everything up, cause he's for Story County.
Yep, uh, the other side of that was that Siler is the same company that, uh, Snyder and Associates uses. So it's just an automatic drop of all of the data that Snyder and Associates has been using and dumping it into our side. So that piece makes that substantially easier for them.
In the fact that, uh, the technician might be in Omaha, it may not be an issue if, uh, we have, uh, local people who are familiar with it, uh, because they work for Story County, so. Any chance you, we talked about running up and borrowing a piece of equipment, can you jointly share the equipment?
I don't think so, at least not the way I was understood, like, the equipment is a one-time purchase that is dedicated to your.
But it's not gonna be used every day, correct?
It won't be, no.
So on the Siler estimate, uh, what are the costs that we have?
Sixty-nine eighty-six, it's on page two clear at the very bottom. It's basically, that's the out the door for the first year service.
And the recurring?
Is eleven forty.
Which is, uh, the first page, the catalyst on demand and the Arc GIS online software?
Yep. Wait a minute, is that, is there another one?
My note?
No, uh, yeah, that was those two.
And the Silver Smith, uh, upfront was sixty-four hundreds and annual recurring is, uh, eighteen hundred.
Yeah, well, what is that seven fifty though, cause that's five hours of ongoing maintenance, so once they run out of five hours, then we have to pay another seven fifty?
The seven fifty on Siler?
On Siler, yeah, down there at the bottom of the second page, support, ongoing maintenance and support is on an, uh, as needed basis. Five hours of ongoing maintenance and support on an as-needed basis. So that's telling me that after five hours of support, then we have to pay another seven fifty to get another five hours.
Which is separate from the other, there's a jumpstart training, there's a full day training, a jumpstart training. Those two are also already included, that was almost twenty-six hundred dollars, training is provided upfront.
But in year two, if we, uh, Joel has a good point, if we've used our five hours, uh, then we would have an additional seven hundred and fifty.
So was the issue with this Siler to begin with, was that it's less than clear what is, what is annual, what is required?
But even if you have five hours, the five hours of support, uh, you may use it, you may not use it. And so apparently you have five hours when you use it, and you have to buy some more. And if you add the I think, so, uh, what we could do is we could get our toes wet by using the Siler. Uh, and if it turns out that we are dissatisfied with it, uh, we can always go the other route.
And once you spend seven thousand dollars, then turn around and spend another seven thousand?
Yes. Well, some, some of that, uh, seven thousand dollars might be, uh, not needed if you're just converting from one, uh, to the other. I don't know.
Silver Smith has its own software.
Huh?
Silver Smith has its own software.
Oh, okay. Which is. Which is compatible with what Story County uses, but.
They, they can adapt their maps to, those Siler maps to theirs, but from what I've heard from Tony.
Did you hear which one they preferred?
Silversmith.
Was that mostly because?
He seemed to think that it, and I'm not going to guarantee what I'm saying. Um, because all the software and all of the hardware all comes together and then you pay that much annually. But they are willing to come up anytime and help for free where the other ones weren't willing to.
They don't want to come back out and redo training without getting paid.
Right.
But the other ones get an extra seven hundred dollars a year to be able to kind of the drop of a hat. Anyway.
Who was it that was in there? Corey?
Matt Corey, yeah.
Matt Corey.
So I don't.
He said he'd be more than happy to, uh, provide any training.
I'm just saying what Tony said.
Yeah.
Um, you call, maybe he'd answer his phone. I don't know.
Well, we don't need to work, uh, act on it tonight. I.
Do we have, do we have, uh, Tony and Scott come up and talk about it?
If I, if I was to act on it tonight, I would go with Siler.
That's kind of where I'm leaning is the Siler side of it. Just simply because it is a system that Story County uses, we do have a local resource in town. Um, as well as same system Snyder uses, all of our maps load without any.
Do we have access to those maps without doing either of these?
Yes.
So really what's, what makes it so much better?
You can't put data in.
Yeah, we can't edit any of their maps.
You can look at it.
So we're gonna have our guys go around and
Yeah.
You think they're gonna carry that with them to do that? Is that the expectation?
That's what we're like. We want somebody to be able to, we want to be able to manage watering the trees so that we can cover it under warranty. We want to be able to manage where every manhole, water hole cover is. We want to be able to manage where, where the, exactly where within two feet where this new, um, fiber is going to be. So what he goes to do is locate, see, all he has to do is pull the ground.
Okay. You're more optimistic on, on the result than I am, I'm afraid.
See, and I, I mean, I'm leaning more towards the Silversmith just because the people that are, the ones that are going to be out there using it are the ones that are saying this is what they prefer. I mean, that's, they're, they're the ones that are going to have to be hands-on. If we get them something that, if we get them something that they feel is going to be too hard to use or whatever, it's going to sit on a shelf.
That's what my fear is anyway, yeah.
But if they, if they feel that they can work better with this one, if that's what he's telling you, and that, I know that's what Scott had talked to me about, was a Silversmith. So I, I, I'm kind of leaning more towards the Silversmith.
And Matt Corey lives right here in town. So.
Anytime Snyder, uh, collects data or has data, uh, it would be, uh, given to us just as part of their engineering contract. And it doesn't need to be converted. Uh, it sounds like on Silversmith, there's a process that you have to go through to get the data, uh, converted. And, uh, months ago, I asked, uh, uh, that every manhole in town be located. And that we then start, uh, figuring out where those manholes, uh, discharge to. The first, we can know where the manholes are. We don't even have that kind of inventory yet. Uh, so it's not just, uh, it's not just finding locations. Where are the things for which we are responsible? How many are there? What are their characteristics? Uh, and hopefully we can then go from there to where do they outlet them? Because water goes in them and it comes out someplace. And we have no idea. Nope. Cause it's never been collected. So I suggest it be deferred to the next meeting, uh, and, uh, you know, given, uh, any other. If I don't have any other information, uh, I'm certainly heading toward the Siler. Because it's less expensive and I think it's just as easy to learn as any other.
Is that a motion to table?
Yes.
Second. Further discussion?
Um, do we need to, uh, be including this cost in our budget amendment?
If we want to complete it by twenty twenty-four, July twenty-four, we would get it too.
We're gonna get it, yeah, this year we'll have to.
Hey, you let Tony and Scott know that this has been tabled in the board hearing.
Well, I think that's what, that's what we need to do is have them at the next meeting for this.
Uh, next meeting is just a couple of weeks, isn't it?
Sixteenth, Tuesday.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
They were supposed to get the stuff to us by sixth or sixteenth.
Yes.
So, uh, when do you have to have the, uh, advertisement in? The public hearing?
Um, it has to be out there for ten to twenty days.
And?
I wouldn't be able to, we probably wouldn't be able to do anything until the thirty, thirty-first or our, our February meeting.
Well, do it, if we do it a February meeting, then, uh, ten days prior to that, uh, is still after the next city council meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Next budget meeting. So we could put this on for discussion at the next budget meeting. And make a decision at that time and then you'd know how much to include as a budget amendment.
So I have it as the sixteenth for the next meeting because I have a bird city management commission meeting next Wednesday. It's the seventeenth.
I thought on the schedule it's like the.
We, we may have moved it because of the, uh, seven sixteenth.
Yes, head librarian parks board requests on the sixteenth.
So they have to be turned in by the sixteenth, so we can have a meeting that evening.
Okay.
And that's a Tuesday.
It's Tuesday. Then our next budget meeting would be the thirty-first, which is Wednesday of January.
Well, we do it at the, uh, sixteenth.
Uh, Tony and Scott, yeah, on the sixteenth. Discussion and action on the Betterment Award.
Uh, vote?
I'm sorry. Yes, we have a second. Any further discussion? Sue.
To defer.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Doug.
Yep.
Steve.
Yes.
All right. Now on to the discussion and action on the Betterment Award.
Is this the twenty twenty-four instead of twenty twenty-three award or is it twenty twenty-three because it's things that they did in twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Uh, time to submit a candidate for the annual Betterment Award. Please submit the name of the individual or organization that you wish to nominate along with a short description of the reasons you feel that they deserve the award, Ken, and should have contributed towards the betterment of the Maxwell community during the previous year. These medals need to be received by February fifth. Please drop off nominations at cityhall email, cityofmaxwell@hotmail.com or mail to cityhall@bettermentawardpilox215maxwelliowa50161. Council will review all nominations and vote for the award winner. If you have questions or concerns, please contact city hall.
This is a posting that normally is put out there on Facebook and web page and whatnot.
Mm-hmm.
No approval.
A second.
Further discussion? There you go. Doug.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Action on the twenty twenty-four membership appointments to Story County emergency management commission.
I move that, uh, Dale be named as mayor. Uh, that Joel as the alternate member and Ken as the other alternate member since they are on the, that committee.
Second one.
Uh, discussion. Only thing I have was that prior years had the mayor pro temp as the alternate elected member. And they'd had an alternate, which could be the member of the committee. But it doesn't say that it has to.
Well, if you're unable to attend, doesn't, wouldn't Doug attend instead in your place?
They shouldn't.
So he wouldn't be an alternate. He would just be mayor and pro temp. Yes.
If you can't attend, then, uh, they would have Joel or Ken, uh, get the Maxwell vote. So Doug would not, uh, if he, he could not attend as mayor pro temp on behalf of the mayor because.
Then it would fall to one of these two. That makes sense. I'll do it.
And the.
I, I'll make it through.
The resolution that's in here is appointing, uh, members to the Polk County Emergency Management Commission.
Story County doesn't have a resolution. They just have this sheet of paper.
So we don't need to do the resolution?
We've never done a resolution for Story County. I was acting looked.
Well, you just send them this form, is that?
I moved that, I guess I did move that Dale, uh, Joel and Ken be appointed members.
Second. Is there a second?
I did, I think.
Sorry. Any further discussion? That's where we're at.
It's in their committee wheel.
Sue.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
All right, uh, on to the resolution for Polk County Emergency Management.
I move to repeat what we just did first.
Stretching that, we don't, why wouldn't we appoint somebody to Polk County Emergency Management?
Because we, we also, fire and EMS also respond to Polk County.
Okay, so we've been attending emergency management here and emergency management in Polk County.
I'm not sure that we've ever went to emergency management.
I used to be on, in, in there and so I'm, I'm willing to go down there.
Well, uh, I moved the same names. We put on the Polk County Emergency Management, uh, uh, commission.
Same as Story County?
Yep. It is confusing.
I found this resolution from last year, so that's why.
We have a motion. Second. Wait a second. Any further discussion?
Maybe if you don't have related meetings, but who knows?
I would honestly, hey.
Sue. Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Sue. Uh, discussion and action on, discussion and action on fire station storage. So we talked the last meeting in regards to adding a storage area off the backside of the fire station in regards to eliminating, one of our storage units that we're currently paying for. And as a more temperature controlled or, uh, protected area for storage.
Well, I think that's a good idea. Uh, we talked about possibly putting a lean-to building on there and it's, uh, maybe twenty foot wide or eighteen foot wide or whatever is appropriate. Cause we still have to get access back to the generator back there. Uh, they have to move the, uh,
Tank.
propane big, uh, so that it's out of the way, but really what we need to do first is just get some sort of an estimate as to, uh, is it, is it possible? Can the building take a, uh, lean-to, uh, add it on to the north side? Would it be twelve foot wide? Would it be, you know, just how wide would it be? Uh, and how far back would it go?
You're, you're not talking just to lean to, you're talking about actually having walls and everything too, right?
Three, three walls.
Okay, sure, perfect. Okay.
So we need to get ahold of some contractors and have them come take a look.
Yeah.
Give us an idea of something that can be actually be done.
How do we get ahold of the, and the inspector would have the information?
Uh, inspector is not in charge of any sort of building. They know the codes, but they only enforce them. They don't actually reveal them.
What, what difference between this and the, uh, uh, moving in the, uh, storage container is that it's all part of the same building.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. It's an addition.
Yeah. So if we get a contractor to give us a bid, uh, that, that they would have to, uh, have the building permits, uh, approved. You uncomfortable with that?
No, I just know that there were times when we would, I would contact the building inspector and he would be able to give me the who, what, why we're for before we were able to construct something. And that's why.
This is, this is when you were the, uh, working as a contractor.
Right.
And certainly encourage, uh, whoever we get as a contractor to, uh, clear their designs with, uh, safe buildings. What you were saying, right?
Right.
Yeah.
My question is, is the pole for the siren going to be in the way?
Yeah, there's a pole there, isn't there? I just realized that there's a fallen shadow. Is that right next to the fire station?
Pretty much. Pretty much.
Well, let's let's find that out uh based upon getting the estimate for what it's going to cost.
I drove I just drove down there the other day. I just noticed. Hi.
Hello.
So, all right.
How's the roads?
Uh they're getting pretty bad. Starting to get some cars in the ditch.
It was sticky.
Plows route, but it's it's taking a little bit still.
First snow here. People don't know how to.
Yeah. They're starting to go in, so. So I'm a little late.
No worries. We'll get with you in one second. We're in the middle of one issue.
So we'll get the cost when we have contract, have a firm come out and take a look at it. Uh they'll tell us whether the pole needs to be moved. Uh and if it does, is it going to be? Uh you know, part of the cost. Uh gonna be taken out and put back in. I don't know.
It can go on and off with the building.
Yeah.
Anybody have any contractor recommendations? I was thinking the contractor that redid city hall.
You started.
Just have them come out and look and see what it would take. Just give an idea, rough idea.
He's local and he's very efficient. Yeah.
So we always put the idea out there that we still go through the bid process so we're not we have an idea of what we're looking at before we get rolling. Any issues?
Good plan, yep.
Okay.
And what we're looking for is uh something with a concrete door and a door. That is only from inside the fire station into that storage.
If that's allowed, I'm wondering if fire marshal would have to have two exits from every. Place, don't you? I don't know. That may be.
I think I think they'd have to have a an exit door in there as well.
I think so.
Look.
But I mean.
That's they'll check that out.
So we just want as much space as we can get for as low as cost as possible. With it still being heated and cooled, looking at utilizing the heating and cooling system that's already existing in the fire station.
And it's big enough, yeah.
And the heating and cooling would be for cold storage.
Cold storage, right. It's not doesn't have to be temperature controlled.
Yeah, not off the streets.
All right, I will put that on my things too. All right, uh sheriff's report.
Yes, um have you guys had been getting some complaints about people racing up and down Baldwin's Hill?
No, Baldwin seems to have taken care of itself with the number of bumps.
Okay, well, we're getting some complaints on that from like the Story County Sheriff's Office page of people drag racing out there, so we're aware of it. Um I know. There's a couple deputies like looking into some other reckless driving that they're not there. I think it's probably out by Rolling Hills.
I was gonna say, it's probably north from the cemetery all the way up to.
So we're aware of that. We we've been doing some extra patrol and we have some trying to fall off out there, but that's really all I've had, I think, in town that's close enough to town there. I just don't know if you haven't still some complaints about them coming in and burning out or.
Sitting up by the school wouldn't be a bad idea when they're dismissing too.
Okay.
Would be a real.
Those eight sided things they kind of ignore.
Yeah. Even in the morning time, so.
Yeah, even coming in.
I'm I'm state center police officer. Okay. Um and so I have a take home car and so using the radar on my way to and from work, um yeah, I've I've had him down to ten at eighty four mile. They're dropping down now. Yeah, eighty four mile an hour coming into town, so.
And if it's a student, they don't get a slap on the hand.
I think that'd be a lot more effective than the time we're spending sitting down in the park area and go kind of east edge town up by the school.
Okay. What's going on down the park?
That's where they've been parking a lot. The deputy backs in there by the rodeo and to me, that's not an area that's going to be.
Is that on night or just during the day?
Oh, during the day.
I've never sat down there, so I guess I've never seen anybody sit down there.
Yeah, my bus route swings through there and I'll see him a couple of times a week down in there.
What time is that at?
Uh seven thirty.
Okay.
A M.
We were down there about eleven today.
Eleven?
Yeah, it varies.
Okay. I put out there that just speed in the morning on fifth and then uh what stop signs are they?
Round the school.
Just being around the school there.
Pretty much the block around it.
Okay, just before and after school there.
Safe to consider with kids.
Mostly mostly speeding.
Yeah. Let's just speed.
I think we put the the speed uh our speed trailer out there before I went during school and I'm not sure where that's at on rotation at all, but generally that's the area you guys want. I think I communicated that last time, so.
Cross the kids across Fifth Street. It's a dangerous crossing.
Yeah, okay.
And they need weather.
I'm not too scared of my ticket, so.
Yeah, maybe that'll help.
I don't have I don't have anything else.
Anything else?
No.
Sounds good.
Awesome. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, uh discussion action on budget planning. I think that one's pretty much done. Are there things we add to that?
Now, we had our first successful uh meeting with the park board and I think everything's been resolved on that one.
Fireboard.
Fireboard, yeah.
Fireboard's tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Yeah, fireboard.
Was there anything else that needed to be resolved on?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I just put that on there as a placeholder in case you guys wanted to talk about anything. This time of year.
Council mayor reports. I don't have anything.
Okay, Sue.
I was approached by a resident. And they asked for uh where are we and what has been done and not done on the junk reports that everybody went out and checked? Have has a lot of that been resolved or there's still several that need to be taken care of and what are we going to do? I was asked.
Yep, and most of those council members are now gone. Uh they divided the town into quadrants and.
Five sections.
Five sections and of those five sections, they have a report. I don't I haven't seen any reports. Um Deb, can I get a copy of those reports when you have a moment? Can you find them?
Okay, second Tuesday next month.
Yes. So I'll I'll follow.
Yeah, because I have one to come to me to.
Yeah, we need to follow up on that.
Is it cars? Is it parking issues? Is it junk? Is it?
There there were several things that, well, the junk up there on Fifth, the house that's being remodeled. All the junk in the backyard there. Uh cars being parked on that Kiff. Uh someone living in a camping trailer on Fifth between Maxwell Street and Baldwin. Yeah, well, I'm just saying that that was reported to me.
I've answered most of those questions multiple times. There's there's nothing against law against somebody living in their camper. Uh addressing the Fifth Street with traffic violation with parking violations.
Yeah.
The other issue, the house, it's a construction project. They got they're permitted, so.
With all the junk.
But they have their trash bags piled up out there. It looks like a landfill out there.
Yeah.
And you can see it and you can see it from both ways as you're moving.
All right, so some people some people clean keep a clean worksite and some people don't.
Okay, and then I was asked about storm drains. Being from one end to the other and it puddles in the middle of the street. And that's on. I think that's on Maxwell. Yeah.
Where?
Um. Between Fifth and Seventh somewhere in there.
Is this in her yard?
I don't know whether it was in the yard. I just.
I think she was talking about the water that's backing up in her yard if we're talking about the same person. And it's been reviewed. It's part of the runoff, just like your street, part of the runoff of the area with no nowhere for it to go. And.
I I don't know if it's a bulge in the street or like it is in mine because it's right in front of my house.
If you want to get some more information on that, we can.
Okay, I will get that.
That's the tush all up there.
You know, it's nice.
Okay.
That was the line.
No, that was all that I had.
Joel. I met with uh Tony and Scott for the fire station, a fire EMS, um a couple of questions that that we were talking about over there. Um so we we talked about their their stipend that they get as being the chiefs. But the assistant chiefs don't get anything other than their normal call per pay or paper call. Um so that's one of the things that I'd like to try and look at is. You know, we expect if if Scott or Tony are gone, then we expect somebody else to step up and take their place. So right now, there's no nobody getting paid for that. You know, we have assistant librarians, assistant deputy clerks, you know. People fill in those positions, but for an emergency, I think I think we need to have. I know talking to Tony, he does have an assistant chief, a captain and three lieutenants. And all of them get paid the same as a rookie, brand new firefighter with no experience. So other than they might make more calls, so. So that was one of the topics that we talked about. Um the other thing I've I've got a task Tony to give me a list of all apparatus and their ages. Um so we can start looking at replacement schedules. Um as we know, uh fire trucks don't always last.
Seventy five years.
Seventy five years, so um.
The one in the back is.
But right. I wouldn't want to take that one out on an actual fire, but um but I looking at at the reserves that we have. Um it's one of those things that we need to put in our in our uh budget stuff is to start putting some money back. Because one of these days we're gonna have to buy a five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollar truck and I know we don't have that money sitting in the reserves right now, so.
Steve, can that work like the sidewalks where you can make a sinking fund, an annual contribution to a specific line item that can be utilized for future capital projects?
The uh council uh has approved that at the end of each year, any unspent funds from their budget. Uh can be moved into their trust account, uh which is for capital purchases. Uh they also have the ability in their budget to uh set aside uh money. Uh and any line item for uh capital purchases. Uh and they've done that in the past where they said, let's put five thousand dollars for capital purchases. If it's not spent, then it goes into the trust fund and can be spent for capital purchases in the next year. Is it a good idea to uh? Have a depreciation account uh for capital items so that uh? Uh uh when you have to replace something, you have the money to do it, absolutely. As everyone was aware from the last meeting, there is a limit on the amount of property taxes that could be raised. Uh and Indian Creek Township is at the limit right now. Uh and since they have thirty seven or thirty four percent, whatever it is, of the budget. Uh then we proportionally spend a little bit more. Washington Township proportionally spends a little bit less. But that limits the amount of money that we have available because we are a joint. Fire fighting area, not just the city of Maxwell. So.
Right, and I just I just know, you know, like we're not putting a whole lot into that fund every year.
To put more in, you just put it in the budget. Uh in order to go to the budget, you have to have the funds to do it.
It's a very important one else to cut.
That's what that's what I'm worried about though is that is that when they when when all of a sudden, you know, we have one of those trucks go down and then now we have to come up with. You know, five hundred thousand for a bare bones engine or, you know, seven hundred thousand. I know we don't have that kind of funds.
What we did last time, when you're talking about the engine itself, uh yes, that's a problem. What we did last time is uh. Uh we uh essentially borrowed the money and from ourselves and paid it back. Uh over time to ourselves.
Which we did with the suburban as well.
Yeah, so we have. Between us and Washington Township, we have cash reserves. We can loan our we can loan ourselves money, but then we've got to pay it back. And that takes money out of future budgets to pay back. So, yeah, just look at the uh fire EMS budgets and if there's any place with uh. Uh any savings that can be made through the year, it doesn't disappear into the general fund.
Right.
It's moved into the trust account. So the more you save, the more you save.
Good good information. A good point. Thank you. Doug.
The there's a sheet here in front of you. I was asked to contact area. Cities to see what they have. I did find a book. The right hand column is from twenty twenty is who these towns were using for their legal representation. Uh I did get some emails today. I sent an email over the weekend, so I had replies from half a dozen there on the left. And those are the ones that they are either confirming that that's who they use or have changed to something else. Avondra has been with Dave Brick and Gentry Aaron, no, wrong name. Anyways, Gentry. Uh for four twelve years. Melbourne is new. Goldfax is with Matt Brick. So that name shows up on several. And Hiller's Law Firm is new in State Center. Nevada has been fourteen years with Aaron Clanton. Who's affiliated with this Matthew Matthew Brick. There's the two that go together. So there seems like two or three that are recurring and multiple years. So I I offer this to uh let us consider if we do want to reach out to some of these and and see what uh what they would charge us. Caldwell is Baxter's and that's our current company.
Is that because of the Collins Maxwell Baxter?
Don't think so.
Uh no.
Yeah.
Uh Caldwell is out of Newton. And uh so Baxter identifies with that geographic area.
For me, one of the things to consider, like, I don't know, how long have we had Caldwell? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
So one of the things to consider with like the breaking Gentry and plant that. Sometimes that's just what happens. They just get stuck in there. Nobody ever considers your movement and gets them just stuck there. So they might be looking at the same situation we are where maybe there's something better, but maybe there's not. So it's just something to consider and make considerations. That's just my thoughts on it.
Brent is a well, they're all well reputable attorney from the city of Des Moines, having lived there all my life until we moved here. They've they've been very good.
Yeah, West Des Moines is their location, right?
Yeah.
I see uh Michael Lewis or Cambridge. Uh I don't know if he is still there. Uh. He would. Uh. I think Maxwell has had him in the past and has uh not renewed with him. Uh I see Amy Beatty on here. Uh isn't she also a lawn counselor or something? Well, I've run in, I've been involved with her at other things, so maybe I'm confused on that. Uh so do we want to? Uh. I sent out a text message to uh the Caldwell firm asking. I sent out a text message to, uh, the Caldwell firm asking for a, uh. Contract for, uh, a list of services that they provide and costs. And we'll see when we get that back, we don't have to enter into it.
I just got a contract in the mail from my staff.
Well, if you would, uh, make copies of it and send it to the council, we can address it at a future meeting.
Okay, so there's that information. And I got a couple other things here, um, I did contact Deb Rogers just to see if there's anything that he had for us to put into. Uh, our budget considerations, if there's anything he anticipated, you said you've spoken with him, so I'll let you address a little more of that if there. Travis property owner now, okay?
So I haven't spoken with, uh, I've spoken with his, uh, real estate agent. That wants to, wants to talk, uh, offered for him to come to the meeting tonight, said he doesn't want to involve council yet. I said, I explained to him that I have limited power, but I think what they're looking to do is find out what interest the city has. Of course, we have interest in bringing new housing availability into town, uh, but. Not every back and column, every penny of our taxpayers' base to make that happen, at least in my opinion. The bonus is, is if they want to move, move quickly, I've been speaking with Greg in regards to the TIF. Uh, as well as the N X process, uh, Pick, Picklack, uh, the Story County. Economic Development Director and he gave me some of the tax, uh, incentives for. Building that need those applications in very soon in order to be able to reap those benefits, which, um, for builders are, are, is really big. So, uh, I'm just gonna provide them with those, that information and what, uh, some of the things that we have done locally. As far as different styles of housing, I think, uh, we're looking for more condensed housing. Versus the spread out layouts for the community, uh, but that's, those are the types of things I thought I was gonna be sharing with them.
Anyway, he did indicate that he had no needs, this anticipated no needs this year. Said interest rates are, are kind of putting everything on hold at this particular time. He did realize that the trailer court and the lift station and the city could all be incorporated at some point, but he said that sounded a bit quite a ways. That's, that's what I had there, um, we were talking about junk vehicles and different things, the Baldwin. Yeah, I saw you had a little sticker on the window, have they been ticketed or?
Yes, they've been ticketed, uh, I was gonna go back, cause it's been another seven days plus, um, so they're still there, so. Like, that's the only course of action we have available, other than we decided we want to consider an abandoned vehicle that we can definitely do that. But then we take on liability of removing the vehicles from property, so.
Moving the vehicles from the city street now.
City property, correct, yeah, that's what, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Which I have another one up on Broad Street is been ticketed and hasn't moved, so. Several have moved quickly, so thank you citizens for that. Um, nothing for Ken, since he's not here today, and then maybe that's about all I have is just working through. I was gonna go back out and do some traffic enforcement again, uh, hope to get that, see that progress of. Seeing those vehicles parked in the right way, the right direction, the right locations, uh, not on city property for extended periods of time. Uh, not in front of mailboxes, things like that, uh. And then community visioning that we have going on has been going well, um, there is a outreach for community support. Uh, we're looking for community members to be part of the focus group, so if you have community members that you want to talk to and encourage them to. Come discuss, uh, transportation in town and upcoming projects or potential projects that we could do for our community. Uh, encourage them to get onto the community visioning website, which, communityvisioning.org, which you can tap right into the Maxwell page. Uh, with the addicts and information on there and posting some things, um, outside of that, uh. I think the rest of the city business has been going pretty well, so, uh, I don't have anything else that we haven't already discussed in the meeting, but.
We should probably put a link on the city webpage, uh, that links to the, uh. Betterment or the community facility planning, so that, uh. Anybody that goes to the city webpage could easily go to the other one and post it on the city Facebook page also.
Deb, do you know who's managing our city website?
Nancy Critcher.
I will send her a message. And I will send Laura a message for the Canadian Facebook page.
Apparently I have the ability to post things out there, cause I did.
Yes, excellent, good.
What can we do to kill that stupid music?
On a permanent basis, right?
Do we need to look at a different, I mean, I don't, obviously this thing, we've been using the same phone system for a long time. Is there another alternative to the free conference call that doesn't have background noise if nobody calls in?
Well, it used to never have the.
It didn't before, just been the last couple months.
So, the way we saw this last meeting was Steve called it for the two hour meeting that we were in and ran up his phone bill. Like, oh, we don't pay by the minute anymore. I don't know, I'll, I'll do some research on that, I'll see what I can find.
The, the question really is, uh, for the free, uh, conference calling. Why does it have music now, uh, when it didn't have it in the past? And this, I can understand for somebody who's dialing in, uh, as a guest. Until we. That, uh, they would get, um, music, but. There's no reason for the host to have the music. And it may just be a webpage setting that we haven't looked at.
Unless it's just trying to tell us that there's nobody on here, which, that's what we found.
Guess we know that, yeah.
If somebody calls in, then it's not making this music, so, maybe we should encourage more people to call in. The videos, the videos made a bigger, bigger impact than I think the phone has, so, people are joining through the video congress.
Uh, what I would like to know is whether or not, uh, uh, the video. Has, uh, good sound pickup.
Yes, you can hear everything, so if you go to, uh, youtube.com slash Maxwell, City Council. You can go out and watch each one of the videos, cause they're all logged and saved, so you can go back through all the years that, that it's been playing. It's, I think it was primarily budget before I got in, and I, I've had to record every one of our meetings when we were able to, so. They're, they're all there, and you can hear what we have to say, it comes across pretty clear. Alright, uh.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Discussion? Sue? Joel?
Sue has to not do the twentieth.
Sue can't vote on it?
Uh, because she wasn't on the, on the council for December.
So Sue can't vote for either one of those, um, Joel can't vote for the fourth. Can you vote for the twentieth?
So, all we can do is approve the twentieth, because we don't have Ken here and we wouldn't get three votes. On the, uh, fourth, right?
So the twentieth and the fourth will have to carry over for next meeting.
So, I changed my motion to, uh, approve the minutes for December twentieth. Uh, and the current bills, uh, and then you have.
I'll second.
Discussion? Alright. Deb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Sue?
No, I can't say anything, I said, I thought about that as soon as I said yes.
Alright, Steve?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Do we need a new designated to make the motion to adjourn?
We do.
Lawrence, Lauren always did the.
Oh, since I got her chair, I suppose you're saying that I, I moved where you're.
Second.
Discussion?
Everybody has a job.
Sue?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Tony doesn't like our mu- music.
I bet you he's probably picking that up.
Tony doesn't like it? Oh, cause he's watching on, uh.